I am the Chair, Bonnie Duffy, for the county's side, and Eric Nyberg is here for the city's side, Planning Commission. A roll call vote on the county's side, Jeff Barth?
Aye, I hear.
Adam Morehauser?
Here.
Doug Odie?
Here.
Mike Ralston? Becky Randall?
Here.
Ryan Vanderflut?
Here.
Okay. You're here on this county's side. The city's side?
Good evening, city commissioners. We'll do a roll call on our side as well. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kittams?
Here.
Commissioner Lukey?
Here.
Commissioner Paulson?
Present.
We have a quorum on the city's side.
Thank you. Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by members of the public afterwards on the www.minnihahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the county commission meeting room and virtually within a Zoom meeting room online. In the Zoom meeting room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item, and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the items shall be recognized by the planning staff in the order hands were raised and state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. First on the agenda tonight is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand, and if you are attending remotely, staff will call on you and unmute your microphone for comment.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll move on to item number one is the agenda and the minutes for the March 22nd Joint Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments or changes to these minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
My second. I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the March 22nd meeting. Any further questions or comments? Roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Mike Ralston? Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflut?
Aye.
That passes on the county's side?
Commissioners, the minutes from March 22nd have been approved on the county's side. Can I get a motion on the city's side?
This is Lukey to make approval. Minutes.
Second, Johnson.
A motion and a second. We'll also do a roll call vote. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittams?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved on the city's side.
Thank you. Items number two through four are conditional use permits. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, May 3rd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the Joint County Commission and City Council for a hearing on Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, at or after 5:00 PM. That meeting is held in Carnegie Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. Next, I will read the description of item number two, and if anyone wishes to comment on item two, item number two now would be the time to raise your hand. Item number two is Conditional Use Permit 21-28 to make one building eligibility available on the property legally described as the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, Section 6, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is Heath Lacy. Property owner is Patricia Lacy. That is located one mile east of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Good evening, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is to make one building eligibility available. It's a pretty common item, our type for conditional use permit in the rural area. This would be located to the east of Sioux Falls along Sixth Mile Road. The petitioner already has a driveway there and is ready to build on the site. Both the county staff and the city staff is recommending approval for this item, and with that, we can take any questions or comments from the public.
Any questions for Kevin? If not, if the petitioner is here, will you please step forward and state your name and address?
Keith Lacy, 111 Wyland Drive, Del Rapids.
Is there any questions for the petitioner either on the county or the city's side?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this conditional use permit to move one eligibility.
Madam Chair, I'll second that. Item number two, 21-28.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 21-28. Any further comments or questions? Do a roll call vote on the county's side. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflut?
Aye.
It is approved on the county's side. City's side?
Madam Chair, before I get a motion on the city's side, can I confirm that that motion did include the one condition as stated in the report?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioners, we have an approved motion on the county's side with a condition on that conditional use permit. Can I get a motion on the city's side?
Mr. Chair, was there anyone from the county's side that was there to speak, or just nobody there?
There's no public input on this item.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. I'll make a motion for approval with the one condition. Second, Irvin?
A motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittams?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
The conditional use permit has passed on the city's side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have been approved. You're free to go. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit 21-29 to exceed 2,400 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 4,992 square feet on the property legally described as the west 100 feet of Track 2 and the west 100 feet, and the north 120 feet of Track 7A and all Track 4. Walker's addition, the north half, the northwest quarter, Section 13, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Jay Gerlock. He's also the property owner. It's about a half a mile north of Sioux Falls. David?
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heinold, County Planning Department. So, Conditional Use Permit 21-29 is to allow 4,992 square feet of total accessory building area. This property is located 47139-258th Street. It's just off the Crooks Renner exit of Interstate I-29. As you can see, the property is outlined in red. The petitioner is requesting to put the building towards the southeast part of the lot, which would be approximately a 60-foot by 80 accessory building with a 12-foot by 16-foot overhang addition kind of on the northwest side of the building. And then I have a site plan showing the location of the building and the overhang that you see on the northwest side. As you see, it kind of looks like there. There's a couple of white squares there that look like the driveway entrances to the building for the rectangular building. Staff went out and did some existing analysis of the existing accessory buildings in the area. As you can see, the properties is outlined in yellow are all the properties with existing accessory buildings that are along the county highway there, 258th Street. There's a range of about 2,240 to about 4,044 square feet. Of note importance that the Joint Planning Commission's previously approved a conditional use permit to allow 7,536 square feet on a parcel that's about 1.86 acres in size, which would be about the same size as this property, and that was about two miles to the southeast on the other side, on the east side of Interstate 29. Staff provided the report from the city of Sioux Falls Planning Department for your consideration, and just have a couple of pictures of the petitioner's house, and the driveway is concrete leading up to the highway. Trees are in the background. This is the proposed location of where the building would be located. As you can see, there is a culvert running under the highway, and you can kind of see where the water wants to run there. And this is some of the existing buildings in the area. Just showing you some snapshots of what's out there. This is located to the west of the petitioner's driveway is where I'm standing, and then this is right next to the petitioner's property and then on the other side of the highway to the north. And then I believe that's all the photos I have. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit 21-29 to allow 4,992 square feet, and there are six conditions on this permit, and I'll be answering any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions for David on the county or the city's side?
Madam Chair?
Doug?
David, is there going to be any problem with where that culvert was? And just directly south, does the water flow? Which way there? Does it flow to the north, or does it flow south? So, there's going to be flooding in that area?
Not sure which way the water flows. Petitioner could clarify on that. It looks like, from what it appears, you can see that the ground looks a little bit higher to the south.
I'll ask him.
So...
Any other questions for David?
Um, no. I'll ask the petitioner.
Okay, the petitioner is here. Will you please come forward, sir, and state your name and address?
Jay Gerlock, 47139-258th Street, Sioux Falls.
Doug, you want to address that?
Yeah, a question just asked. Which way does the water flow there?
South.
Okay, is, are you going to raise the building up?
Oh, yeah.
High enough so you're not going to have a problem with water?
Yep. There's a, you can see a little contour on that photo right there.
Yeah.
There's a drain tile in that contour.
Okay.
So, most of the water running has been addressed years ago.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm going to raise the building.
All right, thank you. Jeff? I have a question. Yeah, are you going to need another driveway off the highway there?
I don't think so. I'm not going to be coming in and out of that building with any vehicles on a daily basis at all. There's going to be no businesses there. It's just...
They may not want to give you one, is the only...
I'm fine with that.
Any other questions for him?
Okay, not, guess not at this time.
Anyone else? Any other people out there have any comments on this item?
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve Conditional Use Permit 21-29 with the conditions that are listed.
Randall, my second.
Six conditions.
I have a motion and a second to approve Conditional Use Permit 21-29 along with the six conditions. We need a roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehauser?
Aye.
Doug Odie?
Aye.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflut?
Aye.
On the county's side. City's side?
City Commissioners, Conditional Use Permit 21-29 has been approved on the county's side, subject to the six conditions. Can I get a motion on the city's side?
This is Lukey, I'll make approval with the six conditions.
Commissioner, I'll second with the six conditions as well.
I have a motion and a second. City Commissioners, is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittams?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
The Conditional Use Permit has passed on the city's side.
Thank you. Your item has been approved. You're free to go. Move on to item number four is the Conditional Use Permit 21-33 to allow full season fireworks sales from May 1st through August 31st on the property legally described as Park Track 4, Lot 5, Pleasant Valley, Pleasant View Acres in the north half, southeast quarter, and the south half of the northeast quarter, Section 19, Township 101 North, and Range 48 West. Petitioners, Explosive Ventures LLC, TJ Cameron. The property owner is Todd Boss at 7401 East Arrowhead Parkway, and that's just east of Sioux Falls. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman again, County Planning Department. All right, so, Conditional Use Permit number 21-33 was originally petitioned for the full season fireworks sales from May 1st through August 31st. Since about the time of writing this report, staff has been working with the petitioner on what he wants to do with the property, especially since staff is recommending denial for the full season fireworks sales. In the report, it does show that there is an option, that there are many lesser fireworks sales or the temporary fireworks sales between June 27th and July 5th, which gets approved quite often throughout the county, and there are several other fireworks sales locations in the area. Kind of bring up the, but other than the duration of the permit being from just the in-state resident sales to versus the in-state and out-of-state full season, the permit will largely stay the same. The petitioner is planning on constructing a building at the location. The petitioner is planning on having the parking there, having storage units in the back, and everything else that was kind of addressed in the permit, including, I think you would still like to do the fireworks stand or display kind of that has become popular with fireworks dealers to showcase the product on the first night of fireworks sales for in-state residents. I would bring up your attention on page two, there's a list of conditions, and as I noted, this was written prior to kind of working with the petitioner. So, if we could work out the conditions of approval, these are basically typical conditions of approval that was done for temporary sales, although this sales would be in a tent the first year, as the petitioner explained, because he wants to build the structure this year, and then it would be in the building from every year after that. So, I, working with the petitioner, he's okay with these conditions, but he would like to store fireworks at the location year-round and just be a storage facility for him, more or less, in the part of the building that he is working out of. And he's been working with the building inspector and the county, making sure that the architectural code review has been done for like sprinkle, for fire hazards, that there's going to be a sprinkler system in the building, that sort of thing. So, condition number 11, it'd be up to you if we're going to look to approve something on a basic kind of conditions. Conditioner 11 can be looked at more closely. But, if you don't mind, I think it would probably be best to go ahead and read through all the conditions for the nine-day sales. That'd be condition number one, that the conditional use permit is to allow retail sales of fireworks in the property during the nine calendar days a year. Condition number two, no outdoor storage shall be allowed at any time. Three, the use of shipping containers for storage of any kind shall be limited to placement during June 13th through July 10th. Four, the retail sales of fireworks must abide by all applicable South Dakota laws and regulations. Five, all outdoor lights in the use of the building or to illuminate the parking area or tent shall be directed away from single-family dwellings. Six, temporary signage must be limited to a maximum of three signs, not to exceed 32 square feet for any one sign, and not to exceed 75 feet for any temporary signage. Number seven, temporary signs for the business are allowed to be placed no earlier than June 13th and must be taken down by July 10th. Eight, flags that are used for advertising shall be located on the subject property, not block the view of traffic entering and exiting the property, and shall only be placed during the regular nine selling days, selling period of June 27th through July 5th. Nine, no parking or stacking of vehicles shall be allowed in the right of way at any time. Ten, the hours of operation for the public will be between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Set-up and tear-down activities outside the nine-day sale period must take place between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Eleven, no storage of fireworks shall be, is allowed on the site after July 10th and through June 13th of the following year. Twelve, the driveway shall include a minimum of 24 feet wide driving area, and all driving surfaces must meet minimum improvement and maintenance standards in Article 16.04 of the Joint Zoning Ordinance. And then thirteen, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the fireworks standard anytime after proper notice of the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance with the Conditional Use Permit conditions of approval and Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. Go through some of the other plans. Another site plan by the petitioner that kind of shows where the building is going to be placed. The petitioner has already done some dirt work on the location. You can see it's been flattened out. You can also see in the background, there is a non-conforming single-family residence in the back on kind of the top of that hill with all the trees. There's the driveway that kind of works as an access road to this property and other nearby properties. And there's the driveway looking to the west, the same access road serving this property and other properties. And this is the, across the street, this is Arrowhead Parkway, looking at city limits, and you can see the dirt work that has been going on, that that part of the city is really changing quick, and then this would be kind of looking the other direction down the street, across the road and city limits. I'll bring it back to the site plan, and I think this would probably be the good time to ask for any questions, and the petitioner is here to answer any questions as well. County planning staff would be, approval, would approve a nine-day selling period. As far as I understand, the city would not follow. They would keep the recommendation. So, it is now up to you guys.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Doug.
Kevin, is there anything that states how, on the item number eight, how many feet off the road the flags could be placed to not interfere with traffic and whatnot?
You know, to not interfere with traffic, to be on the property, for one, I'm guessing that there's going to be that easement there, and I would say nothing in the easement, because that's still a part of traffic. Then if they're going to be placing flags, it might be something where there's like the intersection safety zone where we can look at our zoning code and walk back from the center road. I can't remember exactly how many feet, 75 feet or something like that, and then make a triangle for that intersection where you can see in both directions when you pull up to the intersection.
And is there a size limit on how big the flags could be?
There could be. There isn't in this right here, no.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, I have a question. Are they fully aware of the restructuring of Highway 42 there, or what that's going to entail? I mean, I know they're on a service road as it is, but I'm not so sure that that's not going to change. Do you know what I mean? I mean, I live in the area, I know, but...
Sure. It has been brought up a little bit, and...
Okay.
He's shaking his head yes that he knows about the restructuring.
Any other questions for Kevin, either on the county or the city's side?
Madam Chair?
Becky?
You mentioned in the discussion about a display. I don't see anything about that in the provisions unless I'm missing something.
There's nothing in the conditions about the display. The reason why we did not do that is because even if they were just a regular property owner, if they're lighting off fireworks on the 27th, they could do that whether this fireworks stand as they are not, because it is in the county, and it is during that season of June 27th through July 5th.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Just a quick question. Kevin, is that Jay Aggie then, just to the southeast?
I thought it was a little bit to the northeast, but if it is to the southeast, it might be correct. It's east of there.
Yeah, it is. The fire department...
Yeah.
Is a little bit closer.
One other...
Go ahead, Doug.
With Jay Aggie right there, I know with explosives, he's got stuff in there that are very flammable. Is there any concern with that being so close to this property?
I guess there could be some concern, but it would be, I believe there is a required setback for lighting fireworks from the fireworks building itself, and I would suspect that the, this demolition, or this demonstration area is roughly the same setback from wherever Jay Aggie is located as well.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else? Guess not at this time. Might call you back. If the petitioner is here, will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is TJ Cameron, 2821 East Daybreak Circle in Brandon, South Dakota. Also here with my partner, Todd Boss, one of our representatives from DJNA Engineering, who helped us with some of the site planning, and then Reese Almond from, as an attorney that we recently have been getting some advice from on the subject matter. I did want to just introduce myself a little bit. You know, our family's been in the fireworks business. My great-grandpa was one of the very first fireworks people in the state of South Dakota, so, 50 years. My partner, Todd, has three large warehouse-style fireworks buildings, one in Brookings, one at the Madison Coleman exit, one at the T exit there, and I myself have been in the fireworks business for about 10 years. I operate Brandon Fireworks, which is right across the street from the Brandon Golf Course. It's a temporary location in Brandon. I also actually, well, I'll get to that in a moment. I did want to clarify our request a little bit, so based on what Kevin had said and some conversations we've had with Kevin since, we are willing to only do the nine-day season. The original reason we bought this property... The original reason we bought this property was to operate on the nine-day season. The longer season would be nice to have, but at this point, just to simplify things and appease some of the concerns that the city had, we would retract the extended season and agree to only ask for the nine-day operating season. Further, a couple of clarification points. Mr. Barth, I think you asked about the locations there, so if you looked at the site plan, just right across the street there to the west is that old firehouse building there. And then if you go to the east a little ways, a six-mile road, so just to kind of help you pinpoint where it was at.
Okay.
Okay. As far as, as far as the demonstration and display, although that would be allowed on a county property, we have since discussed it and be willing to commit, even though it wouldn't be a condition, to foregoing any display of fireworks on the property, just as responsible business owners trying to do, you know, what's fair to the city and the county, or any concerns that you may have. Mr. Odie, I know there was a question about the transmission fluids and things and such. You know, I think similar situations could come up with a gas station being, you know, close to the middle of town with, unfortunately, I pump my gas and see people smoking within, you know, a few feet of a fire, and it's really unacceptable, but at least at a fireworks, especially a permanent fireworks store, there are state laws that require signing that indicate that people can't smoke within a certain period or space that we post, you know, in red and white letters per state laws. Same thing with, same thing with, you know, the distance for anybody to light fireworks, not just us. We, you know, hundred and fifty feet or more, and we would even go as far as to post additional signing and allowing, no, we wouldn't allow anyone to light fireworks on our property anyway, but we could post that also, just to, you know, clarify any confusion and appease any concerns that might be out there. The next thing I wanted to address is kind of our timeline to today. So, the reason I'm standing here today is because after, we actually identified this property last July as being in the county and potentially a permanent, you know, fireworks building that was, you know, you know, very nice business, you know, great building, all the codes, everything that you may need there. Although, I personally operate a temporary stand, actually multiple temporary stands. Some of my additional inquiries, first of all, I had spoke to, I should mention this for the city folks also, I had spoke to Jason in City Planning very early on, prior to us putting this offer in. And he expressed enthusiasm for having a permanent fireworks building that was actually to code versus the tents. For your, for a little background, there's a tent just to the west of this property, so closer to the city. I actually was the petitioner for that particular property, it's located at Uncle Ed's. I'm not the operator of that fireworks stand, but I was the petitioner at the time that that conditional use permit passed. And now, and of course, it goes with the property owner, and there's a different operator there, but they operate a fireworks tent closer west, about a mile, mile and a half, which is actually closer to Jay Aggie. Then to the east of us, right at the corner of Six Mile Road, there was a temporary stand, and I'm not a hundred percent sure they operated last year, but I know they did operate the year before, right at the Alibi, which was a temporary tent location. And then just a little further to the east, a couple of miles, there's the fireworks bros that operate a temporary fireworks location on the corner of Highway eleven and where it turns towards Brandon there. So, there's definitely nine-day fireworks, you know, people on all sides of us over there. So, that's one of the reasons we identified this as a great long-term property, to have something a little bit more professional, long-term, and in a building. So, the timeline to today, when we identified that, I had those conversations with Jason at the city, and he expressed some excitement. We had inquired with them about potentially hooking up to city utilities if they were interested, being as we were going to like to give them the revenue if they wanted it, and that they expressed some initial interest. Then, my next inquiry was to the county, and Kevin and I had a number of conversations. And I was attempting to start the process, because we submitted our purchase agreement, signed purchase agreement on July 23rd. But on July 23rd, I spoke to the county prior to us signing our purchase agreement and asked them, asked Kevin, was there, is there a need for a conditional use permit for a nine-day selling season? And we were told no. So, again, since that was on July 23rd, then we submitted our purchase agreement on this property with the contingency that any conditional use permit, we still put that in our contingency of our purchase agreement. And from July 23rd through September 26th, and I have the phone records available, I spoke to the county six times, asking if, clarifying, would we need a conditional use permit or not? And we were told at least three or four of those conversations, which I have handwritten notes from and the phone records, I was told that we would not need a conditional use permit for the nine-day process. And that's why we didn't apply for any sort of conditional use permit prior to closing on the property, October 12th. Six different times I had talked to the county, that's just calls from me to the county, I don't remember how many. I couldn't locate in short time how many returned phone calls there were. It wasn't until after we closed, and we started design work with DJNA, and also hired an engineer, or an architecture firm to, you know, design a life safety plan and get everything set up, invested half million dollars almost to date, bought the property for four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars. In addition to that, nearly a hundred thousand dollars worth of planning on the building. We have Reeves Construction, who's already built all the property. And it wasn't until two days after the deadline for this meeting that Kevin had called me and mentioned that, and I had this conversation with him, by the way, that I was going to cover some of this information, because I certainly appreciate everything he's done for us, and I wanted to make sure he knew that I was going to bring up some of these concerns, and I'm sure he'd be able to speak to him as well. But Kevin called and said that there was some confusion, apologized for the confusion, but that we were going to have to go through and get a conditional use permit. And the reason that he brought that to my attention is he said Dan Kitzler, who's the county building inspector, had been talking back and forth with him, and there was some confusion, and he apologized for the confusion, but that we did need to go through a conditional use permit process, but it should be somewhat of a formality. At least that's what we originally thought. So, got a little bit concerned at that point, because we had now already closed on the property, and we were basically working on the building permit. So, we started to go through the process, because I did know what it was, but when I inquired three or four times during those six phone calls that I mentioned, we were told repeatedly we didn't have to even go through this process. So, that we would have started this process a long time ago. I'm just trying to explain to you guys, we would have done our due diligence long, long ago and eliminated any concern, hence made six different calls, because we were almost a little bit surprised that we didn't need one. But we were refused, basically, to start the process. Anyways, since then, there'd been some confusion on also whether or not a fire sprinkler system would be required. And at first, our architecture firm, which is Design Arc in Brookings, they indicated to us that we were told we wouldn't, because we were hooking up to county water, wouldn't have enough water supply. But then, in some of the concerns in the staff letter, especially from the city, and for you folks digitally there on the city, expressed some concern about the fire conditions, we have committed to, and are already have, a fire sprinkler system under design. We basically didn't even argue the fact of whether or not it was going to be required or not going to be required. We've just said, look, we're willing to put it in. And we will be, to our knowledge, the only fireworks store in the county that has a sprinkler system. And to our knowledge, any fireworks store in the state that has a sprinkler system, but we're going to do it anyways, whether it's required or not, because we're just trying to make this as easy a process as possible to make sure we can move forward with our business. So, that's already under design, and it will be submitted to Dan with our final building permit approval. And that'll be regardless of whether we hook up to city water or not. We're going to have the proper tanks brought in that are necessary for a fire suppression system that makes them very expensive if we're hooked up to county water, to have the right water pressure, but we're committing to do that anyways. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I have bullet points on nearly, you know, every highlighted piece that's on here. One piece of just the conditions that I would maybe like to discuss, as a reminder, we'll commit to not doing the display if that is a concern of fire of the county or the city. Also, the nine-day season, so if it's not going to have any consideration, we'll just completely remove the discussion about the extended season, even though that was out-of-state residence, but we'll remove that from the discussion just to make things simple. But on the thirteen points that Kevin read through, just a couple of things that I would like to potentially touch on. Hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The state allows fireworks sales from 7:00 a.m. to midnight, so we would just ask to be allowed to do fireworks sales at the same as every other fireworks retailer that I'm aware of in the county, at least any of our other stores. And then, the storage from after July 10th, you know, being as it is, a building being built for this very specific use, including a sprinkler system that isn't even in many other fireworks stores, we would request to be able to store our product in the building. If, however, it is a concern that would cause denial, we are willing to transport the fireworks out of that location as we have other fireworks stores that could house it. But it would frankly be safer in that building, under the proper storage, especially with a sprinkler system. I mean, fireworks, many of this temporary fireworks tents that have, that are restricted to move their fireworks, luckily, my family's in the business, so we're able to move our fireworks into another location with fireworks, but some of the other fireworks stands store them in just storage units, you know, in the middle of town, out in the county. So, this is a building that's built for this use, and it would be safe to store them there. But if it's a, if it's cause for concern, we would be willing to relocate them. And then the only other thing is on point number three, we do import direct, our family does. So, we have storage containers, and I know when I discussed this with Kevin, he had mentioned that, you know, they're an eyesore at a lot of the temporary locations, and that's maybe why that was in here. But that it could be more appropriate for a commercial building, as our sidewalls are sixteen feet plus a roof. So, if we had any fireworks that showed up in March or April, that's when the containers kind of start arriving, that they'd be stored behind the building where they'd be out of the sight, out of sight from, be invisible, you know, from the road. But again, that's a request. If it would be a cause for denial of our conditional use permit, then we would remove that request. We're just trying to, you know, make sure we can stay competitive and avoid any extra expense if we can. Any other questions that I can answer?
Any questions for him on the county side or the city side?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, state who you are.
Yeah, Kurt Johnson, city side. Mr. Cameron, the storage unit section that was being on the plan here, is that going to be a permanent building, or is that what you're referencing? You could potentially be using portable storage units?
Thanks for asking. Is that Mr. Johnson, was it? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, that, this site plan reflects the other use for the property. So, that second row back there are permanent storage units, that'll be fifteen by forty, that'll be leased out. Behind that, there's a phase three where eventually, I know there was some concern about the residential home. Right now, it's there, it's non-conforming use, but long-term, we would build storage units behind that row that are permanent also, and leasable storage units, not for the use of temporary fireworks storage or anything like that. They'd actually be leased so that they would fit kind of the use in that general vicinity. And I think the storage units would provide some great, a great addition to the city and to the county as far as an asset for residential development that's going, you know, not too far from there. I know it's hard to find storage.
Gotcha, so as part of this, you would like to use shipping containers for that limited window for potential storage if products started to arrive?
We would request it, but again, if it would be any cause for denial, we would remove that request, and we would just truck the product in and stock the shelves. We have other locations, the one at T, the one at Madison Coleman, and the one in Brookings where we can store storage, or where we can store shipping containers, the forty-foot shipping containers, when they have to be dropped by a crane off the semi. And we would request to put them there, but again, if it was a cause for denial, we could remove that request and adhere to the conditions that are here.
Sure, just to clarify, ideally, you would like to potentially do that, is there a specific window or just...
I could give you a specific window, thanks for asking, because if it would help you, I would say March 1st through August 1st would be very easy for us to accommodate.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him? I guess not at this time.
Okay, I do know Reese would like to just make a couple of comments, I believe, and remind me if I, unless I covered everything. He was here to help keep me on track.
He needs to come forward and state who he is and his address, please.
Welcome to, I know you guys have a long night, I'll be fast, I promise, if that's all right with all of you. Reese Almond with the Davenport Homes Law Firm here in town. Just want to touch on a few points, I think TJ did an excellent job of covering the project, which has evolved quickly, I understand, since you guys got the first staff report. So, there's a lot to unpack, but the primary highlights is, you know, it's just going to be a nine-day temporary season. As TJ said, there are these conditional facilities to the west and to the east of where this facility will be located. This is going to be a permanent building with sprinkler systems. So, it's going to be safer than the temporary tents that are going up west and to the east during fireworks season. If you look at the four factors laid out in Section nineteen oh seven of the zoning ordinances, the first is the impact on the proposed use on adjacent properties. As you guys are familiar with the area, these are commercial properties around it. So, this commercial building will look very similar to the facilities around it and the commercial properties around it. There's also the possibility of storage units behind it, as TJ touched on, to really add value to the residential areas that are being proposed further off. The staff report even recognizes that the area around the subject property is composed mostly of commercial uses and warehouses. It'll match the surrounding buildings. So, I think that, under nineteen oh seven A, that element is a factor satisfied here. Under B, measures shall be taken to ensure that the use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. Again, it's going to be another commercial building that's just like the commercial buildings around it. There's going to be sprinklers in place to make sure it's safe. There are conditions proposed here by Kevin to make sure that this isn't an eyesore. There will be some temporary signage, perhaps some flags during fireworks season, but absent that, it'll look just like any other commercial building. So, I think factor B, you've also heard from TJ, and I would encourage you to put this as a condition, that there are not fireworks demonstrations to occur at this facility. They're willing to accept that, especially given the local business that has some flammable things in there. It'd probably be a bad idea to light fireworks. So, I encourage you guys to put that as a condition, you guys are not allowed to demonstrate fireworks, and they're happy to accept that. Subpart C, effects of noise, odor, traffic, air, water pollution, and other negative factors. As the staff report notes, the sale of fireworks will not create noise, odor, or pollution in the immediate vicinity. This is especially the case, given we're limiting it to the nine-day season, rather than the extended season for out-of-state. This is going to be nine days of selling fireworks. The fact that the ingress and egress is actually on a service road, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but will stay there after the highway construction?
It is, it is planned to stay there from the construction plans that we received.
So, that will really help with the ingress and egress off that highway. Any sort of backlog will occur on the service road rather than on the highway. So, under subpart C, we believe this is a conforming use. And under D, the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. There'll be tax revenue generated, just like any other county business. They're willing to hook on to the city water and utilities if the city wants that to occur. We talked about the storage units he talked about earlier, and this would just be another, you know, more permanent, less of an eyesore fireworks facility that exists on the east side of town, frankly. So, given all those, I would reiterate what the staff report says. On page seventeen of mine, it says, "With many temporary fireworks stands already in existence in the area, county planning staff suggests that a temporary nine-day fireworks sales would be acceptable for the property." So, given all that, and given the unfortunate adventure that led us to today, I would just ask that you have an open mind. The applicant here is doing everything they can to make sure this is a facility that complies and surpasses the ordinances and the requirements found in the ordinances. So, I just, with that summary, if you have any other questions for me or TJ, I'm sure they're happy to answer them. But with that, if there are no questions, I'd respectfully ask you all to vote yes on this conditional use permit.
If I could just make, just one more county, and this may be, or one more comment, and this may be for the city folks in particular. I did have some notes highlighted under section D there, that the proposed shall not adversely protect the product, and the very last line, it says, "But the property does not contribute back to the city." I did want to just bring a couple of things to the attention of the city, and I'm sure that you're already well aware of this, but, you know, the utilities we've offered to connect to, to generate revenue for the city. Employment, you know, will employ a couple of dozen people during the peak season, and I know right now seasonal employment's pretty tough to come by. You know, I know that that's something that we would contribute. And just as an example of, not a promise of what we would do, but proof of what I've done in the past, just at Brandon Fireworks alone, where I operate similar proximity right across the street from the city limits, I do contribute... street from the city limits, I do contribute a great deal to the city, and while it may not go into the direct tax revenue of the city, I donate to several nonprofit, profit organizations throughout the year, and I highlighted just a couple of them so that you could understand the contribution that I believe fireworks can bring to the city and the residents from a nonprofit standpoint. We donate to the Ed Polzin Auction, or Ed Polzin Fund, which is for cancer survivors, Auction Amore, which is the Brandon Valley Chamber of Commerce, number one, we were actually one of their prime sponsors at the event this last Friday. I donate to the Optimist Club, we're a contributor to the Wild Game Feed in Brandon. We are a major contributor to Brandon Hockey Association, Brandon Soccer Association, the Herny Turney Golf Tournament, which is a, another cancer-fighting organization benefiting cancer survivors. We donate to the Brandon Food Pantry, and I also donate to the Sioux Falls Humane Society, and I do a, a donation drive every season. I also donate, a major contributor to the Pink Ladies of Bottoms Up, which is in Corson, K Kids Wild, Dakota Kids Sports, which is an organization that encourages youth sports and youth engagement, which I'm big on, and the Justman, and then some minor individual fundraisers that we contributed to. Justin Hegeman was a, an individual community member that had stage four cancer, we were a major contributor to that, and at least a half a dozen other miscellaneous individual organizations that were raising money for members of the Brandon community. So I just share that with you for the city, because I do want you to feel that we are, you know, I want you to understand we're business owners that give back. Thank you. I'm here, if any other questions, come on.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This is Lukey. Question to, to the petitioner, would you be okay with the condition if we were to add a sprinkler system in the building to city code? Would that be something that you would be able to do with?
Yes, we've already committed to that regardless of the confusion in the past to make sure that we appease any concern, so we would be okay with that condition. I, I might make the request that you allow Dan to get our building permit going for us, with the condition that before we would get occupancy, we'd have to have a, you know, approved sprinkler system in place and all that stuff. That would just help us get moving for this year. Because I know there was a comment about the tent, we would actually like to operate in the building this year, but we're so tight on time now, it's going to be very, very difficult. But if we get approval tonight, we're ready to go on construction the second that Dan gives us approval on the permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? Guess not at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that wishes to speak to this item? Anybody on Zoom?
No, nobody is on Zoom, with raising their hand.
Kevin, do you want to come forward with some of these conditions?
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I would like the conditions to be clarified here because I've got some chicken scratchings by all of these, plus I have 14 and 15 that I, I wrote up. 14 being a no display or demonstration, 15 be sprinkler to city code. And I'm probably confused on some of the other ones.
Okay. So the conditions that I understood to be changed would be condition number three, and we'll go in order here. The use of shipping containers for storage of any kind to be limited in placement during June 13th through July 10th, and the petitioner is requesting March 1st through August 31st, right?
I think I stated August 1st.
August 1st, okay. My, my chicken scratches aren't very good either. March, August 1st. And then we would go down to condition number 10, where the petitioner is requesting that the hours of operation go from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. I would note as a staff that I think for the last, oh, about three or four permits within the joint city area of the county, the 7:00 a.m. to 12, or the 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. has been the, the standard for the joint city area. Number 11 would, the petitioner would like, or was requesting that that could be scratched with the replacement of the sprinkler system, and we'll just put the sprinkler system requirement to go in there, that required sprinkler to conform to building code. And then, then number, add number 14, that fireworks are not allowed to be discharged on the site.
On number three, if it would make any difference, we would commit to putting the fire, any, any potential storage containers behind the building, if it would matter. I mean, we may not even have any, but just to clarify that.
Okay, for those that are listening on Zoom, the petitioner is suggesting that if we need to, we can add on number three, that the storage unit, our storage containers be stored behind the building, away from the right-of-way.
Can I ask about number 10, Kevin? You're saying you want to keep it as it is?
From my perspective as staff, I would like to keep the 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as it is. That has been, I can't say that's going to be, he, he's right that many of the other stands in the area do have 7:00 a.m. to 10, 12:00 p.m., or whatever, to midnight. But the 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. has become more standard as these temporary sites have come and gone through the joint jurisdiction.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, state who you are.
Commissioner Johnson here, on the city side. When it comes to some of these, you know, this is kind of an unusual situation, putting together the conditions as we go along here. I'm just concerned that we're, using Kevin's words, if we're making a standard, I, I question whether we should have Commissioner Barth's number 15 in there, requiring a sprinkler system, because then that would be, does that, does that become any bellwether for fireworks sales in this nine-day period? I can just speak from my memory, on some of the other CUPs we've done, at least one here specifically on the west side, there was a single family within line of sight of cars coming off of Highway 42, that would make more sense for restricting the evening hours. I don't know if it's appropriate for this one or not, that'd be my opinion, but since we want to have this discussion now as opposed to post-motion, you know, that'd be my two senses to not do that. I don't know what others think. During the hours, leave them 7:00 a.m. to midnight.
So Mr. Johnson, this is Jeff Barth. You find that 7:00 a.m. is too early and midnight is too late, and you would prefer to stay?
No, not at all. I think we shouldn't put a standard on the hours in this case.
Okay. Just, I wasn't sure.
Because it's not close to a single-family residential.
Too many.
There are some of the other ones where the joint jurisdiction, it was more appropriate in other instances when it was much closer to a single-family residential. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Sorry if I'm not making that clear.
Yeah.
Understood.
I would point out that midnight is 12:00 a.m. That would be embarrassing.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, this is Lukey.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to Johnson. Yeah, I don't want to make the sprinkler system, you know, basically a normal condition. I just think it's something that we can kind of do to kind of allow storage to happen where the applicant wants to store there all year.
Okay, any other comment?
Madam Chair, this is Irvin. This is Irvin. I was, I agree with the other two statements that really a conditional use permit is a series of conditions, and they are for this specific use in this specific site, so I do not believe that these create a, a new kind of precedent that has to be followed by others. I think this is appropriate in this particular location.
Okay, any further comments?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I think Commissioner Irvin is wise, and I'll make a motion to approve this conditional permit 21-33 with the conditions as listed, with the exception of number three, striking June 13th through July 10th, putting in, behind the building, March 1st through August 1st. Going down to item 10, striking 7:00 a.m. till whatever that is, and, and making it 7:00 a.m. until midnight. Then, on 11, I, I think the sprinkler is a good idea. It's going to be a hard building, it's not a tent, and so I think... Is that on number 11, or do I make it number 15? 15?
Number 11 is the storage, so we could replace the storage with the sprinkler requirement.
Okay, let's do that. But then going down to an item 14, no display or demonstrations.
Is that your motion, Jeff?
That's my motion.
This is Randall, and I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve condition.
Madam Chair, the attorney for the applicant is, wants to...
Can you just clarify, no fireworks display or demonstration, so that's clear?
Yeah. Sorry, fireworks demonstrations. He just wanted, so if I want to demonstrate my singing voice, I could do that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit 21-33 with all the conditions and those that have been changed. On the county side, we'll have to do a roll call vote. Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam Morehouser?
Aye.
Doug Odi?
Nay.
Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflit?
Aye.
It is approved on the county side. City side?
City Commissioners, conditional use permit 21-33 has passed on the county side. It's passed with various conditions as stated in your packet, and then later amended by Commissioner Barth. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
Mr. Chair, is this one of those that, since we denied it, do we have to do the opposite on this one?
I would ask you, Commissioner Lukey, to make your motion in the affirmative, and if that is something that you're interested, state that it's for discussion purposes.
Okay. I will make a motion for approval with the updated 14 conditions.
I'll second, Johnson.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, please let us know if you have any further discussion on this item.
Mr. Chair. Lukey.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the app, you know, working with us on this one, and I, you know, in the future, we don't want to make sprinkler systems a necessary thing, but I think it's something to allow where they wanted full-time yearly storage that, I'm looking to optimize to, to make that work, but thank you for working with us on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Commissioners, any other commentary? Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Chair, yes, I just wanted to echo Commissioner Lukey's comments, and yeah, in this example where we want to have year-round storage of potential product on-site, sprinkler system is appropriate. Earlier, I was just talking more to the fact, if anything we put on these kind of CUPs was going to become a standard, or viewed as a standard going forward, that, that was going to be a slippery slope. But, you know, previous comments from Commissioner Barth, Commissioner Lukey, this makes a lot of sense as this has been presented, so I'm going to be in favor of this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any other commentary, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. All in favor of approving this item, you will say yes. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittums?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
The item has been approved on the city side.
Thank you. Your item has been approved, you're free to go.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time and patience. Thank you.
All business, no new business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second that.
Roll call vote, Jeff Barth?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Doug Odi? Becky Randall?
Aye.
Ryan Vanderflit?
Aye.
We adjourn on the county side. City side?
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Irvin? Dr. Lukey?
I have a motion and a second, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kittums?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukey?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
We adjourned on the city side.
Thank you.